Thank you. All right. Good evening. I'm Sandy Mieskens, a member of the Board of the League of Women Voters of Marquette County. Welcome to our candidate forum featuring the candidates for the Marquette Board of Light and Power and the candidates for the Marquette City Commission. We will also take a look at the many initiative petitions that are circulating now. Running for two seats on the Marquette Board of Light and Power are Margaret Brum, Doug McMahon, and Carrie Stat. Mr. McMahon did not respond to our invitations made by phone, email, or certified letter to participate in this forum. Because of a conflict due to our changing the date of the forum, Ms. Brum is in a different location, but we appreciate that she and Ms. Stat agreed to have a combination Zoom and in-person forum. Running for two seats on the Marquette City Commission are Sally Davis, Michael Larson, and Matthew Luttenberger. They will have an in-person forum here tonight. We are live streaming and recording this forum to our League's YouTube channel, to which you can find a link on our Facebook page or website. The League wants to thank the Marquette City Commission and Ann Mikahaga for allowing us to use their chambers for this forum and for the help of Taylor Headmark with the AV and the live streaming. We ask that during the forum, all cell phones are turned off and no photos or videos are taken, besides those by the League. Also, no campaign material, clothing, buttons, or signage are allowed during the forum. Candidates may distribute information and mingle with the audience after the forum. For 105 years, the League of Women Voters has engaged and educated voters through our candidate forums, voter registration drives, and voter guides. The League of Women Voters is a nonprofit, nonpartisan political organization established to encourage citizen participation in government. It never supports or opposes any political party or candidate. We offer you this opportunity to become acquainted with the candidates and their views in order to promote an informed vote on Election Day, November the 4th, 2025. The format for the forum has been established by the League of Women Voters. Each candidate will have one minute for an opening statement, one and a half minutes to answer each question, and one minute for a closing statement. Before the forum begins, the candidates draw numbers to decide who will speak first. The order will be rotated for each question, and our timekeeper will indicate a 15-second warning and a stop sign at the end of time. The candidates will be answering written questions submitted previously by voters and by audience members tonight. Please, for written questions, use the colored cards for the City Commission and the white cards for the Board of Light and Power. The questions may be combined or reworded for clarity or to avoid repetition. We will use as many questions as time allows and try to cover the most pressing topics. To maximize the time for questions, please hold your applause, except for the welcome and then the thank you to the candidates. Candidates have agreed to respond only to the question asked by the moderator. Active debate with other candidates is not allowed. Views expressed or candidate statements provided in this forum are those of the candidates, and the League takes no responsibility for them. Before we start, I just want to remind you that our League is an all-volunteer organization, and our funding comes from dues, grants, and donations. And if you like and rely on these forums like this and our voters' guides, please consider donating to support these activities. Donation forms in a jar out on the desk is available. So it looks like this, and you can donate and join at the same time. So we welcome you to do that. Also, if you'd like to join us and become a member, this form is also available. Thank you again for joining us this evening as we all prepare to cast our vote in November. Now, please welcome the candidates for the Marquette Board of Light and Power.
I think we're just waiting for a moment for the Zoom to begin.
We're just working on the Zoom. As you all know, there's sometimes a little delay.
Okay. Good evening, and welcome to the League of Women Voters of Marquette County's forum featuring the candidates for the Marquette Board of Light and Power. I'm Sandy Breitenbach, a member of the League and the moderator for this forum. The Board of Light and Power administers the Marquette Municipal Electrical Utility under the supervision of the Marquette City Commissioners. The utility produces and transmits electricity to 16,000 citizens of Marquette City and all or parts of nine townships of Marquette County. There are two seats open on the Board of Light and Power and three candidates running for those seats. The candidates participating tonight are Margaret Brum, who is joining us via Zoom, and Carrie Stat. As determined by lot, we will start the opening statements with candidate Stat. You have the floor for one minute.
Good evening. I believe this is where I introduce myself. Yes. Okay, very good. I'll try and get used to this. Good evening. My name is Carrie Stat. I am a resident of the city of Marquette. I moved to Marquette, Michigan in 1981. I can't believe I'm telling you that. And I came here to go to school.
And when I finished my school education, I decided that I was going to stay. So I have enjoyed being a part of this community for a very long time. My career offered me the opportunity to meet many people. As a role as a nurse in the emergency department, I think I met one member of every family in this county, either stitches or a cast. So I've had an opportunity to meet my neighbors and the community at large. I welcome the opportunity to get to know you all tonight and look forward to answering your questions to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, and, excuse me, please hold your applause until the end. Thanks. Candidate Brum, you have one minute.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Brum, and I've been an elected member of the Marquette Board of Light and Power for the last three years. I'm running for reelection because I believe my contribution to the board has been meaningful and that the board does a fantastic job in providing electric power to the people of Marquette and the surrounding areas with a minimal amount of cost compared to the value received. My background is in engineering and in law. Prior to service on the Board of Light and Power, I was an appointed member of the wastewater advisory board for Marquette area, which means I know way too much about sewage treatment and power generation, which makes me a nerd amongst nerds. I look forward to your questions tonight, and I look forward to continuing serving on the Board of Light and Power.
That concludes the opening statements. We will now start the question portion of the forum. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer each question. Candidate Brum, you have the first question. Describe the skills and experience that make you qualified for this office and explain your reasons for running.
The skills and experience that make me qualified for this office relate to our regular and routine course of business, which is once a month, we gather for our meeting, we go through the budget, we go through the action items. Usually that involves reviewing requests for purchasing of new equipment and/or maintenance and/or reviewing maintenance programs. My engineering background qualifies me for reviewing very complicated bidding processes, which we get from people all over the world. In addition to that, my finance background qualifies me because each meeting, we get a stack of invoices, summary invoices, about an inch and a half thick. And as members of the board, we go through each page, and our finance people ask questions and answer them about each page. So our financial investing in the process is as great as our technical investing in the process. The past three years, we've been involved with the beginning of the second tie line, which is a power line that will connect us to the grid, enabling us to have a backup in even our main power line fails. My work with the board has been successful, and then I've actively participated in all the meetings, and in the last three years, I haven't missed one meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Candidate Stat, same question.
Thank you. As I mentioned earlier, my career is in nursing, and I have a 36-year career in nursing here in the hospital system that we employ here in Marquette. As a member of that team, I was also affiliated with the union that took place to support our nursing staff. And the role that I played in regard to that union was to be a liaison between nursing staff and administration to promote good stewardship, to promote good communication, and create and foster a solid working relationship between the staff and the employer. I'm a decisive individual, and I'm a direct individual. I really don't concern with making decisions so much as maybe making a decision with the opportunity to come back to it full course and look at how the outcome has fallen into place and whether or not we might need to amend that. I have a desire to problem solve with the best outcome, looking for the best outcome that I can find. My goals are to represent my city and my community and my neighbors. I do currently sit on the Board of Directors for our Y at the Marquette County YMCA, and I am an active volunteer in our community setting. Thank you.
Okay. And candidate Stat, you will have the next question first, and that is, what do you see as the major challenges for the MBLP to provide inexpensive electricity to the Marquette residents? And what are your plans for the MBLP to provide inexpensive electricity?
Well, I think the Board of Light and Power has really stepped forward in regard to that goal already. With the placement of the rice generators, that goal was to help eliminate overwhelming costs in our electrical grid, in addition to creating a system where it alleviated the emissions that went along with the power plants that we have had in place. We also, I know the Board of Light and Power offers a solar panel field that people can buy into and take part to help reduce costs for their power. In addition to that, they are also, the board seems to have communication with outside businesses, outside power sources, that can offer us power at a very responsible financial rate. And so together, it seems, with these processes in place, our Marquette Board of Light and Power is very proactive at creating a situation that will alleviate overwhelming costs for us here in Marquette. I know that there will be newly instituted, you'll see a $1.25 charge on your Board of Light and Power bill that will offer funding to, you'll have to forgive me, I'm going to forget my word, but it will create a budget so that the people that are looking for assistance with their electricity have an opportunity to take part in that. Thank you.
Candidate Brum, same question.
The best thing the Board of Light and Power does to respond is to supply reliable power, is to maintain an active maintenance schedule with the equipment that we do have in the sense that every piece of equipment, we have three generators at the Marquette Energy Center, and every piece of that equipment has a maintenance schedule, which we follow to a letter. And this has avoided, in my time here, any catastrophic failure, any catastrophic situation, which always involves more money. In terms of keeping the amount of bills low, every morning, the people in the office gather together and they review the cost for either purchasing power from the grid or operating the Marquette Energy Center. And if it's cheaper to buy power from the grid, that's how they supply power that day. And if it's cheaper to supply power from the Marquette Energy Center, that's the choice they make. And it's not unusual for them to change in the middle of the day from purchasing power to generating power in the evening. This makes it possible for us to take full advantage of our attachment to the grid, as well as always being able to supply power in the event we're cut off from the grid. That's always in place. In terms of forward aspects, as I said, we're always on top of maintenance, and to date, we have yet to have any problems related to failure to follow the regular maintenance schedule. Thank you.
Candidate Brum, our next question. What are the top two priority issues that the MBLP should address? And what actions would you, as a board member, take regarding each of them?
The number one issue for the Board of Light and Power for this year and the beginning and next is to finish the installation for the equipment and poles for the second interconnection to test it out and make sure we're online. In the event we lose our first connection to the grid, we have a backup. That project's been ongoing for over 40 years. This past summer, the public noticed because of the polls that were laid out on 553 and other locations. That is the number one issue. The number two issue is to monitor the legislation coming out of Lansing. Right now, we have a renewable energy situation that won't allow us to run the Marquette Energy Center the way it's supposed to be run in a few decades. And we're working with the politicians there to carve out an exception for the rice units, that's reciprocal internal combustion engine units. And both the Marquette Energy Center and the people up in Nagone are carving out that exception as well. That's a critical exception in order to supply power to heavy industry in the area, including the mines and various industrial complexes that require that much energy. So the first number one thing is hooking us up to the grid and the second interconnection. And the second thing is monitoring the legislative reality so that we carve out the exceptions for our heavy-duty customers, so they have adequate power to continue. Thank you.
Candidate Stat, same question.
I will echo some of what candidate Brum has said. I'm learning. I'm really just in the learning phases of our Board of Light and Power, and so I'm new to this program. But what I have learned is that the second interconnect that Margaret mentioned is really the top priority for us. This is the risk-free situation, if you will, my term, so that if, for some reason, we came to a point where we might be losing power, the second interconnect will be the thing that will keep us connected to the grid and allow us to maintain. With that, we need to be able to comply with the state mandates, and so we have relied on our legislators to bring forth information to the state to help us maintain the rice generators throughout their lifetime. My understanding is that their life is extended through the year 2049. The mandate comes to fruition in 2050. So as we continue with our rice generators, we're hoping that the legislature will offer us a little bit of leeway in definitions of what clean energy might look like, and that will allow us a little bit of flexibility to maintain the rice generators. I think the other thing that seems really important to the Board of Light and Power is maintaining the system that they currently have. And so they are really putting funds and money into maintenance of what is already there so that we can continue to use what we have in place. Thank you.
Okay. Candidate Stat, you'll have this next question first. The Lake Street residents have spent their own dollars to improve their neighborhood. Meanwhile, the former Chyris plant site is a growing eyesore with continued use of the site for storage. As MBLP board member, what will be your plans to clean up the former Chyris plant site and make it neighborhood-friendly?
Wow, that's an important question. I would mention that I think it would be important to hear from the community on Lake Street to see what it is that they really seek in regard to that location. I'm not familiar, I'll be honest. I'm not familiar with a cleanup plan indicated for that site. I don't know what they have done, nor do I know what their plan for that site will be. So part of what my goal in this role would be, would be to educate myself. And in educating myself, I need to understand what the Board of Light and Power's plans are, but I also need to understand what the community on Lake Street seeks. There have been a lot of ideas from a lot of people as to what they might suggest for that location. Some I'm familiar with, others I am not. But it is an eyesore. If I lived down there, I know for my own self, I wouldn't care for that. I would have to get together and with those people in that community to understand what they seek. For my own self, I think extension, I like the beach. South Beach would be great. I think extending parking for South Beach would be wonderful. I don't know if that's a viable answer, but I think talking to that community and finding out what their needs are would become important. Thank you.
Candidate Brum, same question.
We have just about every month received proposals from groups and individuals as to what, quote, "we should do" with that piece of property. Right now, we have ongoing obligations, number one, to the state of Michigan to keep it open for fishermen. And no, I'm not exaggerating, we have an obligation from the state to keep it open so that people can fish there. We also have contracts with various shipping companies. It's used as a discharge point for large rock. Typically from the mines, they have boats unloading huge amounts of rock that they truck up to the mines to use in various mining operations. So it is not just, I apologize for my use of the term "eyesore," it's a working industrial site. It's an offload facility for large boats. It's also got a fishing requirement. It also has a requirement from the National Power Grid that, as it is Board of Light and Power land, it at any time has to be subject to whatever the needs of the grid are, in the sense that our opportunities for permanent buildings there are limited. Many of the people who suggested ideas there are looking for a more permanent nature for building, whereas we are limited in the sense that the grid, the grid needs of the grid always come first. As I said, if you have an idea, bring it to the board. We've had multiple ideas from both government agencies and private personnel. We welcome all of them. Thank you very much.
Candidate Brum, this next question will be yours first. What do you think the MBLP should be doing to prepare for using more renewable energy?
I'm glad you asked that. Can everybody see this book? It's called Renewable Energy Crash Course. And when the legislature brought this matter up in the election season last year, I found this book online, and I got a copy for every member of the board. And we got a new member of the board, and I made sure he got a copy as well. We are inundated with information about renewable energy, most of it coming from different political groups and different factions within that group. I'm an engineer by training, and I was frustrated by the lack of definitions in those proposals. I don't like the use of sloppy language or political language when it applies to science. So I went out and got this book, which is a summary of what we know right now about renewable energy across the United States and also into other countries where this is a huge topic of conversation. At least once, a meeting, someone brings up something they've heard about, a different area of the country, or like in Europe, they're doing renewable energy, some of it being generated by traffic itself. So the renewable energy situation we have now is based on our geography. It requires a robustness that we have yet to see demonstrated, except in Iceland, which has geothermal, which we don't have. So it's an ongoing studying aspect, and thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Stat, same question.
Thank you.
Would you repeat the question one more time, please?
Absolutely.
What do you think the MBLP should be doing to prepare for using more renewable energy?
Thank you. Well, I believe the MBLP has put their best foot forward in regard to this with the placement of the rice generators. They're very effective. They use natural gas. Natural gas is inexpensive. The emissions, including sulfur oxide, nitrogen oxide, and carbon monoxide, have been markedly reduced with this system in place. I know that we are currently pursuing legislation to redefine the term "clean energy" so that we can continue the use of this process and look forward to the year 2050 as to how we might adapt to the upcoming state mandates. We also maintain relationships with other utilities so that we are able to buy energy as need be, so that if it's a more cost-effective method, if it's a more financially effective method, I know the guys at the Board of Light and Power look at this on a 24/7/365 basis, and if they feel they can bring in energy at a better rate, they will choose that. We have the solar panels that are in place, and people can buy into that. That helps and that promotes renewable energy. In addition to that, we collaborate with consultant groups and municipalities to find our best foot forward in regard to how we can pursue and maintain and look forward to more renewable energy. Thank you.
Okay. Candidate Stat, this will be your question first. How will you work with other utilities and ATC transmissions to reduced costs to customers?
Hmm. That's a good question. As I mentioned, I'm very new at this, and so I have not had a chance to establish relationships with other utilities or other people working in those utilities. So my goal in this role would be to become knowledgeable with faces and names and people in those utilities and share ideas across the board with them. I have a lot to learn. I have a lot to learn. I admit that. I'm a nurse. My biggest energy need was when I needed to plug something in and have it work. And so having that in mind, I have an entire education that I will acquire. But I also know that I look forward to the opportunity to creating new relationships with people in these businesses and people in these utilities so that I can get to know what their needs are in addition to ours. And with that, work collaboratively with them so that we can come to goals that are suitable for both us at the Board of Light and Power and them as well. It's important for us to collaborate in our community so we come out with the best outcome for everyone involved. Thank you.
Candidate Brum, same question.
My experience has been that we are well-connected with all the utilities on the grid. Most specifically, there's a municipal group for small-sized utilities such as ourselves, where we belong, and acts as a lobbying group and information-sharing group, as well as our voice with the legislatures. They also do a great deal of work in disseminating information to members of the group so we don't have to have onsite experts for everything. We've contracted with them for a number of different realities that have been imposed upon us, and they provide the service so that we don't have to hire the experts themselves, or, I want to say, our monitoring group. And I'm blanking right now with the abbreviation, but we are part of every available group that bands together to supply power at a smaller location or the remote location. In the meantime, working with the grid, as I said, every morning, the powers that be get together and look at the amount of money that we have to spend to either generate power ourselves or buy power. If it's cheaper to buy power, we buy it. If it's cheaper to generate it, we generate. If we get a call from the grid that says, as we did three Christmases ago, and there's a massive storm, the TVA has tripped and Marquette has to go to full output, within two hours, Marquette was at full output. So in terms of being connected to the grid, we are incredibly connected, and we make use of everything we have to make sure we spend as little money as possible. Thank you.
Okay. Next question. And candidate Brum, you will go first. Tell us about an experience when you worked in a group of six or more.
Well, there's five of us on the boards. I'm going to have to go outside of the group of the five of us. But in my But in my professional experience, in my patent attorney career, I've worked on committees as many as 15 to 20 people. And in fact, working within a group is an art skill in and of itself, because a group is weaker than an individual unless every member of the group understands the purpose of the group, the theme of the group, the goal, the timing, and what their position is. Now, I'm pleased to tell you that of the five members of our group, we work very well together. We have one meeting a month and we get a packet of information. And when we show up for that meeting, I'm pleased to report that every person on the board has done their homework and is ready to dive in, and whatever questions are required, either financial or technical, are answered. But my job as a member of the group is to show up, as I said before, I haven't missed a meeting, to listen to the motion, to have the discussion, to ask the technical questions and financial questions, and then make the best decision I can based on the information available to us. And I believe that the Marquette Board of Light and Power is a well-run, large group that provides a better decision-making process than having one and only one person make those decisions. Thank you.
Candidate Stat, same question.
I'm sorry, ask me the question again.
Sure. Tell us about an experience when you worked in a group of six or more.
Well, that would have been my entire career, which was kind of nice. Teamwork effort was something that was really the thing that made our jobs work and function together. As a nurse in the emergency department, and I held that position for a very long time, each person in that department carried a role. And with that role, we had one, for instance, if we had someone in cardiac arrest, it was very evident that roles became delegated and someone ran the room, someone, and jobs were delegated out. The point being is that as a group together, we worked cohesively in order for the best outcome for the person in front of us. And that would be my expectation in any group setting. There are times in a group setting that the person in charge has to address someone in the room and say, you know, at this point in time, the best thing you can do for me is to step out of this room and achieve a job outside this door. There are times that people in this room need to stay in the room and take part in what's going on. But the person that runs that room, the person that's running that show, the person that's running that code, is the person in charge, and that's how those things work. A teamwork effort is important. Everyone has their own role, they bring their own expertise to the setting, and that's the thing that makes it beneficial to everyone involved. And I would look for that type of cohesiveness, I would look for that type of interaction in the group setting that I found at the Board of Light and Power. Thank you.
Okay, this will be the last question before closing statements. And candidate Stat, you'll take this first. How will you work with large customers, NMU, the hospital, the prison, to reduce their costs?
First of all, I guess I'd need to know what their concerns were. By asking questions would be the place that I would have to begin. I would have to learn what their concerns were, I would have to learn what they were seeking, and then I would have to learn, again, more about the Board of Light and Power and how we can accommodate the things that they need. I'm not certain what those things are. I don't know what kind of cost reductions they might seek. So invariably, my goal would be more of as liaison, I think, open to hearing what people have to ask and responding the best I know how. Again, I openly admit, I'm not well-versed on the goings-on of the Board of Light and Power at current. And so it would be my absolute plan to become as well-versed as I could over time so that I could be a beneficial contributor to those communications and those facilities. Thank you.
Candidate Brum, same question.
Whenever we work with any customer, large or small, and they come to us and ask for assistance in energy planning, we have a track record of their energy uses from our utility from the day they were a customer to that current day. So we have a background of what their normal energy uses are. At that point, as candidate, the other candidate spoke, we review what their concerns are, what they perceive to be an issue, what they concern going forward. In fact, I was at a meeting where a developer had notified the Board of Light and Power, they'd be adding, I think it was 60 units to an existing development, and we went through our warehouse to make sure we had the right amount of connectors, and I'm using a sloppy term, but the right amount of equipment. So when they came time to build those 60 units, we had that in place. In the meantime, one of the first things you do in any energy audit onsite is you verify the placement and the working of the meters to make absolutely sure the meters are recording the information accurately. And the big reason people come to us is to cut costs or that they're worried about an expansion, and we come up with a number for what we think the expansion will cost or what, how much money we could save by providing certain services or by cutting certain, certain things that they get now that they don't really need. And then you come up with a plan and the customer signs off of the plan and you implement the plan in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you. We have come to the last minutes of the forum for the Marquette Board of Light and Power. Each candidate has one minute for a closing statement. Candidate Brum, you have the floor.
I'm asking people to vote for me to, for second term on the Board of Light and Power. I enjoy serving on the Board of Light and Power, it's a good fit for me, my background, my education and experience. I genuinely look forward to the meetings, even though it sounds strange, it gives me a chance to use my engineering background at the forefront. I'm also a lawyer and legal work is not the same as engineering. I believe we provide a very adequate service with a limited amount of fuss. I've never known our people to have any trouble with any question asked, and that includes technical questions and financial questions. It's a great group of people and it's a great group of people to work with. And walking out of the meeting, I know we've done a good job and I know I've been part of that. In terms of my service to the taxpayers, I've been on the board three years and I've not missed one meeting. And I believe my compatriots will tell you that I participate in all meetings and that I'm just not another pretty face. Thank you very much.
Candidate Stat, you have the floor.
I guess in closing, what I would like to say is that I would definitely be the new kid on the block. I come into this opportunity with very open eyes. As a retired nurse, I retired three years ago, and I've kind of had a few years to have some fun and do some travel and get some fun things out of the way. And now that I've done those things, really my goal is to become very civically engaged in my community and in my neighborhood. With my role on the Board of Directors at the YMCA, I've learned a lot about that group and what it takes to be a member of the board. I really was encouraged to do this by many of my friends who felt that I would be a strong voice on the board. I think I'm a sensible individual, I'm decisive, and I, as I mentioned, I don't have a problem making decisions and then amending decisions if I need to. But I think what I would like to do is become civically engaged in my community. I'd like to take this opportunity to support our Board of Light and Power and our publicly-owned utility to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Okay, this concludes the forum for the Marquette Board of Light and Power. Please thank the candidates for their participation. Next, we will have a presentation about the many initiative petitions that are circulating now in hopes of being on the November 2026 ballot. Following that, we will have the forum for the Marquette City Commission.
There we are. Good evening. I'm Jo Foley, I'm a member of the Board of the Marquette League of Women Voters, and we're going to take a look at the multiple petitions that are going to be out there up until July or so of next year, striving to become proposals on the ballot in November of 2026. There's quite a few, sometimes they're fairly confusing. So I thought this would be a good time to go over them and help you know what you're signing, should you care to do so. This, again, is one of 15 states that has citizen-initiated ballot proposals. So this is a quite a privilege for our citizens to be able to not just have the legislature initiate laws, but have citizen groups do so, even up to constitutional amendments. To do so, a group of citizens come together, they develop a proposal, they submit it to the Board of Canvassers of the state, as well as a 100-word summary of their proposal. When that is all okayed, and there's a major process for that we don't have to worry about, then they become petitions, and you'll start seeing them on the street. They're required to get a certain number of signatures. If the proposal is a constitutional amendment, they require 10% amount of signatures that is 10% of the votes cast. Somebody answer. That's okay. Anyway, 10% of the votes cast in the previous governor's race. Okay, so this year, that is 446,198 signatures, okay, of verified registered voters in Michigan. If what they're proposing is new legislation or amending existing legislation, they need fewer, they need only 8% of the previous votes in the governor's race, which is 356,958 signatures. The third kind of proposal would be a referendum, and that can be something like repealing a law. And that needs fewer signatures, only 5%, which is 223,099. So hopefully, I don't have to count these things. So once they receive those, if they get enough signatures, they're all verified, they become proposals on the ballot, and we've seen those before. So it's quite a process. The first proposal, first petition isn't actually a petition. Every 16 years, by our constitution, our state-owned constitution, we're required to put a Michigan Constitutional Convention on our ballot proposals. So this one will be Ballot Proposal 1 in November of 26. It asks the voters if they want to have a state constitutional convention and completely revise the state constitution. This hasn't happened yet. No one, no group out there is proposing this or necessarily wanting this. This is something that we have to have on the ballot every 16 years, just so you know. The rest of these, though, are still, are going to have to collect their signatures. In no particular order, one of them is called Rank Michigan Vote, and this would propose a ranked choice voting for major offices in the state, and that would be federal offices, the governor and lieutenant governor, the attorney general, and the secretary of state, not the state legislators. Okay, just so you know. What happens is when you vote, and this is all happening in a program, in the ballot counter, when you vote, you rank up to four candidates, first, second, third, fourth choices, as their ballots counted. If nobody gets greater than 50% in the first count, then the lowest, the candidate getting the lowest number of votes is dropped, and the votes that were ranked second, third, and fourth for that candidate are distributed to the other viable candidates. I know this sounds pretty wild. And that process goes on until somebody gets greater than 50%. It is a little confusing. We know it works because there are some states, some cities, and some countries that use this, but you'll have to read, you'll get more information about it as time goes on. So that's Rank Michigan Vote, and that is a constitutional amendment petition. So they need all of those 400 and whatever thousand votes. The next one I'm going to talk about is called Axe Michigan Tax. This is also a constitutional amendment proposal. Basically, what it does is eliminate all residential and commercial property tax in Michigan, period. This property tax is the primary funding for counties, municipalities, schools, community colleges, parks, and voter-approved bond repayments. This proposal is suggesting that to offset some of this loss, they would want the portion of our state income tax, marijuana, alcohol, and tobacco taxes to be, the portion to be increased to go to cities, townships, and counties. Okay, so that doesn't mean the tax is going up in amount, it's just that the portion that these entities would get would go up. But this money could only be used for essential services and infrastructure. It could not be used for schools, community colleges, parks, local government services. They don't suggest how else these things are going to be funded. The other point of this is the petition wants to change the rules on how we increase taxes locally and in the state. Locally, it would require 60% of voter approval to increase local taxes. In the legislature, for state taxes, it would require 66% of the legislation to approve. So that's the Axe Michigan Tax proposal. Clear as mud, right? Okay. I don't write these, I just tell you about them. Okay, this one is probably the most confusing. It's called Voters to Stop Pay Cuts. It's confusing only because there's a backstory that you have to understand. This proposal, if it passed, would repeal State Public Act 1 of 2025. But you have to know where that came from. So in 2018, there was an initiative petition to raise the minimum wage, you might, many of you might remember that. It got all of the signatures it needed to go on the ballot. But another thing that can happen at that point is the legislature can adopt that petition rather than have it go to the ballot, and that's what the legislature did. They adopted that petition and they amended it in that same session. The people that brought that petition sued, and it went to the Supreme Court of Michigan, and the court ruled that it was unconstitutional to adopt and amend a, in the same session. And they said that the 2018 petition should prevail. Then, the legislature, in a different session, amended it again, and that became Public Act 1 of 2025, which this particular petition is trying to become a proposal to go back to the original proposal of 2018. Okay, I can see people going, okay. But that's basically the story there. The difference between the two is that the, in the PA 1, 2025, the minimum wage actually goes a little higher a little sooner, but the tipped wage goes only to 50% of minimum wage by 2031. In the, in the original, 2018, minimum wage went up, but the tipped wage also gradually went up to 100%, 100% of minimum wage by 2030. It's a major difference. Okay. That's enough of that one, right? Just so you have it in mind when you see the petitions. Okay, this one's much simpler. This one's called Invest in Michigan Kids. It's a, another constitutional amendment. What it would do would be if you were a single filer, tax filer, in the state of Michigan, and your taxable income, that's after deductions and such, was $500,000 or more, you would be taxed an additional 5% on everything over the $500,000. If you were a joint filer, it would be everything after a million. This money would be deposited in the state school aid fund and used exclusively on local school classrooms, career and tech education, reducing class size, and retaining teachers. That's it, right there. That's that proposal. The next one is called Michiganders for Money Out of Politics. This is not a constitutional amendment, this one is an initiative for legislation. So it requires fewer votes, as you can see on here, 356,000 instead of 440-some. So it requires fewer votes, as you can see on here, 356,000 instead of 440-some. Basically, what it's doing is asking that there be no political contributions from regulated monopoly utilities, which are like DTE and Consumers Energy, or from corporations that are seeking or holding large state and local contracts. So it cut out political contributions from those entities. It would also change campaign, rather, extend campaign finance rules to cover messages that name the candidates or ballot issues, even if they don't advocate voting for or against them. So it extends those campaign finance rules. So that's that one. The next three are very similar. There's two of them from the Americans for Citizen Voting, number one and number two, and there is one, Protect Voters' Rights. All three are very similar. There's a few differences within them. They are basically what are called documented proof of citizenship laws. These would be constitutional amendments if they went through. In reading about the status of these petitions, people are saying that probably it would be number two that would go out as a petition rather than number one, but we haven't, we don't know that for sure yet. Whoops. So we can be looking at number two. These petitions are suggesting doing several different things. One is to verify all registered voters as far as their citizenship status. Some of them say that the secretary of state should do it, some just say it needs to be done, and then obviously removing non-citizens. Secondly, and most specifically, they are saying that when you get a new registration or when you change your registration, as if, like when you move, right, you must go in person with documents proving your citizenship, and those documents would be a birth certificate, a passport, naturalization papers, not just a photo ID that does not indicate your citizenship. There are other things with this. They are saying that absentee voters need to provide a photo ID or partial social security number. They are requiring photo IDs at the polls rather than an option to do an affidavit if you don't have it with you or you don't have one. But the two major things are the verifying of citizenship and the having to bring your documents. Just one of the concerns here is that all of these kinds of documents cost money, and they take time. Also, it's true that about 80% of all married women in the United States take their husband's name, which means that your name on your birth certificate is not the same as your name on your voter registration, which is your married name usually. So that name would need to be legally changed, which is, in Michigan, a six-step process that includes a court order. So these three are very similar, whoops, with very few other changes. You may notice that they're similar to the SAVE Act that was put federally. So those are, I think it's nine possible petitions. We will have for sure the one, the constitutional one, and then the others will depend on whether they get their signatures. But we, whoops, but we want you to be understanding of what these petitions are asking before you sign them. And when you are shown a petition, you want to make sure that it's a true petition, and a true one will have at the bottom, paid for by, and then the name of the group and their number. That's how you can tell it's a valid petition. So we want you to know what you're signing before you sign it, and we have additional resources, if you care to go to them, for information about the petitions, and there's certainly, as they become proposals, there'll be more information out there as well. That concludes my presentation, and let me see if people are ready. Okay, we now would like, we're just going to switch over nameplates. We will be welcoming the candidates for the Marquette City Commission and giving them out our lovely water bottles. Are we ready to welcome? And happily, all three candidates are here tonight. You got the order right? This second. Sorry, this is what happens when you have two forums, right? You gotta set up in between. Okay, now, please welcome our candidates for the Marquette City Commission.
Well, good evening all, and welcome to the League of Women Voters of Marquette County's forum featuring the candidates for the Marquette City Commission. I'm Darlene Allen, a member of the league and a moderator for this forum. The Marquette City Commission represents the citizens of the city of Marquette. They are charged with governing the city. They pass ordinances, establish budgets, and policies affecting Marquette and its residents. The city commission has the power to hire the city manager and the city attorney and to appoint citizens to serve on numerous advisory boards and commissions. There are two seats open on the commission, and three candidates are running for those seats. The candidates participating tonight are Sally Davis, Michael Larson, and Matthew Luttenberger. So welcome, candidates. We begin this evening with opening statements, and as determined by lot, we will start with candidate Luttenberger, and you will have the floor for one minute.
Thank you. I guess, I mean, I haven't really prepared any statement. I'm here, though, because it's a civic duty. I see it as a thing that we as citizens have to do. If we want active democracy, we kind of have to be a part of the process. So this isn't my first time. I've done it, I think, seven at this point. I don't assume lots, but this year could be different. I haven't had a seat. At the same time, I've been active in city activities, I guess, up here. I don't really go out much on Third Street very much, but at the same time, I'm glad we have a social district that we can enjoy. Those kinds of decisions, I'd like to help with, those kinds of decisions. I think I can help debate, but I don't agree with everything, and I don't plan on agreeing with everything. But I'll let you know what I think while we do it, as long as I'm not in a timeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Larson, you have the floor for one minute.
All right, thank you. Good evening. My name is Michael Larson. I grew up here in the UP, just down the road in Ishbaming, so I'm a lifelong resident. I've been in Marquette for the last 20 years. So now I live here in Marquette with my wife, my family, so I know what it's like to live here. I know what it's like to raise kids here in the town. I know what it's like to have a safe community. And, you know, we hear a lot of national headlines, but the truth is that it's here with local government that impacts our daily lives, whether it be streets, roads, public safety, or, you know, our park system. For the last three years, I've served as a city commissioner, however I was appointed. So I am here today to earn your vote, to become an elected official of the city of Marquette. So I look forward to working on those issues, whether that be maintaining our roads, our water systems, and then supporting housing solutions for the city residents here in town. So looking forward, hopefully, we can keep our focus on some sort of affordability, maintaining our infrastructure that we have, and really looking forward to the services we have. Thank you.
Candidate Davis, you have the floor.
Thank you. You know, the League of Women Voters has provided a forum like this for a lot of years, and it's a really nice service to the community, so thank you to the league. I'm an incumbent. I have served on the city commission since April of 2020. First, I was appointed, and then I was elected, and now I want to run again for this additional three-year term because I love the city, you know, and it's because of the details and the business of the city is very interesting to me, and I'm willing to spend a good deal of time studying and gathering input from the staff, from my research, my personal research, and, most importantly, from community members. I'm seeking another term because I remain deeply committed to this community and the future of our city. I think I represent all, never that, that darn, 15 seconds. I think I represent all of the knowledge and skills and experience that complements the remainder of the city commission. Thank you.
Thank you all. That concludes the opening statements, and we'll now start with the question portion of the forum. Each candidate will have one and a half minutes to answer each of the questions, and candidate Larson, you will have the first question first. What are the current top two priorities that Marquette should address, and what actions would you, as commissioner, take regarding each of them?
Thank you for that question. I think there's a number of issues in the city of Marquette that we have, that we hear about on a routine basis, you know, whether that be housing, workforce development, childcare, and some of those are interrelated to one another. So, you know, let's start off with housing. You know, we are certainly in that position right now where we've seen property values rise, we've seen rents rise, and that is a concern certainly for citizens here in Marquette, folks that want to move here, people that are looking for jobs. You know, what are those, what are those things that we can do to help move housing in a direction that is, that there's something for everyone here, you know, whether it be, you know, income-qualified, middle-income housing, workforce housing, and even some of that higher-end housing? I believe that there's a balance to be had, but what are those things that we can do as a city? We can start looking at our codes, our local codes. What are those options that might be available to us? What are those tools we have to encourage additional housing so we can make that happen? Other pieces is workforce development and economic development. We want to maintain Marquette as a place where people want to live and work and recreate. Through that, you know, supporting things like, you know, childcare and housing are really going to make, you know, Marquette come to life, and those are a few of the items that I think are very important that we need to be focusing on in the coming years.
Thank you. Let's see. Candidate Davis, you have the next question.
The number one issue that always floats to the surface for me is our budget, and I know that the community continues to hear about that, but I'm not sure the community remembers that We Energy closed several years ago, and when We Energy closed, we lost 15% of our property tax, and it remains that way. So we have that, and we have, we are continually trying to recover from a lot of bonding. That bonding was good because it did a lot of good things for our city, but we are continually trying to reduce our debt. And we also have a lot of brownfield redevelopment projects where the increase in taxes are wrapped up into the brownfield fund, and so just recovering from that, I know, if you ask me what I'm trying to do about that, there's a couple of things. We need to work with the state legislators because ours, but our, the money that we get from the state is in danger right now. We are, well, actually, I was a very strong advocate for working to get a revenue share with the DDA, which also gets a TIF that we could be, that's kind of a complicated answer. The other thing, since I only have a few more seconds, is let's talk about transportation, whether that is e-bikes and other bikes, and also the traffic that is around the old hospital and where Northern is putting in new housing, and we have a traffic study that's going on with that, and so we need to take a real good look at how our traffic flows and keeping everyone safe.
Thank you. The question goes to you, candidate Luttenberger.
All right, I think it was, what's the number one?
What are the two, the current two top priorities, and what would you do as a commissioner to address those?
Thank you. So I'll say, basically, I'm here to help Lakeview Arena. I think it's been neglected for too long, and if there's any personal project that should be done or complicated or completed, I would say I'm here to help Lakeview Arena become more of a centerpiece like it used to be. And a lot of that is because there's new ownership or new management, or it's our park, it's our facility. We, as city residents, are not really utilizing it. We think of it as an ice rink, an ice rink only, and I would like to bring more of a central location to that, treat it as a place where you can come and park your car and then get on the bike path, where you can come down and grab a meal. So for me, it's the north side of town is being neglected a lot, and I'd like to see that side of town, which now has new roundabouts, new housing, we lost supermarkets, we lost a place to go have a meeting and a lunch area or a coffee. So there's a lot of things on the north side of town that I think can be improved upon that's being neglected, and I don't really feel comfortable saying that upfront because these two are really good at their job, and they've been doing their job for a couple of years, but it's a slow process. So any kind of thing that we say is a top-notch priority, for me personally, getting around town, I hate our hills. I would like to see a bus service that is just local. That could be done. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the next question, and it begins with candidate Davis. Citizen involvement in civic surveys has historically represented a demographic of people who have time and resources to get involved, like answer questionnaires and attend public forums. Should city commissioners represent the interests of all city residents, and if so, how do you solicit the needs and wants of those unable to get involved?
That's a loaded question. Absolutely, commissioners should be listening to everyone in the city, no matter what age or demographic they are part of, and that's, I believe that is a major job of the city commissioners. You know, we make decisions, sure, we listen to staff because they have a lot of expertise, we do our own research, and then we have to represent the community. Sometimes that means making sure that you're out in the public and asking questions. A lot of it is just answering phone calls and getting out there, and really paying attention to what they are saying. That means doing a lot of active listening, not a lot of active telling, but working hard to understand where they are coming from and what their opinion is, and seeing what you can do about that. I take a lot of time talking to the people that are, that contact me, and I've done things like walking the woods to see where we're going to put some housing, or just driving around to see how the snow plowing is going when somebody is complaining about the snow plowing. So it's not only listening to ones that contact us, but it's out, being out in the community and seeking that information from others. Thank you.
Candidate Luttenberg, the question goes to you.
Actually, I think being a participant in democracy means you've got to have a point of view, and I'm not afraid to share it, I'm not afraid to point it out. I'm also not afraid to listen to and rearrange. Like, so if I might say something that somebody doesn't like, I'm not going to shun that, I'm going to actually invite that criticism. Part of it is you're representative, but you're also part of, this is your decision, and it's my name on that signature or my, you know, group process. In that sense, I'm going to stand up for my decisions, I'm going to make them, I'm also explain them, so I hopefully don't annoy a lot of people about it as a mystery. But it seems like, I believe, being a part of our community means standing up for what you believe in, in our community. So even though we're a group, there are a lot of individuals, there's a lot of cliques that might not talk to each other. Being the conduit, being the catalyst, that's our job, and yes, we've got to make our decisions, but I'm really annoyed at 7-0 votes. I think some dissent is really kind of important, especially in a democracy. You know, there's the old story of being the 11th man. If 10 people agree, force yourself to ask why. So in that sense, I would, I think the high top priorities of our city is basically So, in that sense, I would, I think the high-top priorities of our city is basically stand up for yourself.
Candidate Larson, the question goes to you.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, I think the City Commission, our Commissioners should represent, you know, the entire city. We should be able to meet folks where they're at, be out there in the community, understand, you know, those folks that aren't able to engage. What are, where are they involved? You know, are they involved in other civic groups? Are they involved at luncheons? Are they involved with Kiwanis? You know, where are those places that us, as Commissioners, can interact with individuals? Is that down at community gatherings? But we want to meet people where they're at, and then we want to be able to listen carefully to what they have to say, what are their concerns about the city and understand what those concerns are. You know, what are they utilizing in the city? Where, what do they think could be, what could be used better? In the end, whether we, even if we disagree, we're all after the same thing. We all are a member of this community. We're all trying to better this community. And, you know, we have that same goal in the end. We want to work towards a way to make this community the best place that we can live. And I think we do that for meeting people where they're at, inviting them to engage, listening, and then ultimately using that input to take action.
We'll move on to the next question, and the next question begins with Candidate Luttenberger. What issues affecting our lakefront are most important for you if you join the City Commission?
Thank you. I like the work we've done to fix Lakeshore up by Pine and Lakeshore Drive. I believe that cove really needs some support, and I'm glad the state and the feds really stepped up and helped us out with that. I, South Beach, that one, I think we need more parking. I think we should get everybody off of the Lakeshore Drive. And again, this kind of goes to, how do we utilize these recreation spaces? Is it individually, we have to go down there as one in a car? Or is there a way that you can utilize? Utilize the joy. How do I say this? Having a trolley ride going from South Beach and the Eagle's Nest or whatever that's, Eagle's Ridge, all the way up on Lakeshore to Picnic Rocks or past to Presque Isle. We need to get a lot of communal access, but we have no parking. And I don't want to put any parking anywhere near Lakeshore. I want to use it as a recreational center as much as possible. And in order to do that, I think we need to open up our transportation system. But I think we all enjoy the lake, and I hate the condos that went up. It blocked it right at that entranceway of the roundabout. I'm not going to tear down houses, but I want.
Candidate Larson, the question goes to you.
Thank you. We've got 9.8 miles of public shoreline in the City of Marquette. You know, that's an asset. We want to be able to protect it. We want to be able to utilize it. We want to preserve it for future generations. You know, we've already seen the impact of, you know, changing weather on some of our Lakeshore as evident with the Lakeshore redevelopment project. The city's been working with Superior Watershed Partnership to help mitigate that and rehab that beach section down there. It's a unique project within the state of Michigan that, you know, I certainly look forward in being done. So, you know, I think we've got a lot, we've got a lot to do. We don't want, we want to preserve, we want to preserve, be able to develop within the city, but we don't want to do that at the peril of our Lakeshore and our access. We want to maintain that access for our community. So, I think making sure that we have development in the right places at the right time that are not going to impact the Lakeshore are certainly something that the community values and that we have heard repeatedly that, you know, we do not want to be, you know, the next Traverse City. We don't want to sell out our Lakeshore. We don't want to sell out our access. So, I look forward to working with the community moving forward on this issue.
Candidate Davis, the question goes to you.
Okay. Let me, I'll bring you back to our historical lakefront where it was full of coal and a lot of industrial tanks and a railroad and what we have done with our Lakeshore. Most of that through brownfield redevelopment. So, it looks much better. I know that people don't want to build on the Lakeshore, and I understand that. I think the thoughts of our community right now have kind of, we all understand that we want no more building on the Lakeshore, but we want to preserve the view. And I think that that's what a lot of us miss, driving down the highway and being able to see the lake. So, let's preserve as much of the view as we possibly can. I really like what we have done to protect our shoreline going up towards Presque Isle from downtown. And that has taken, I think that was a $12 million project that's taken several years. It looks much better, and I think that we are a model for other cities to preserve Lakeshore and in an environmentally sound way. I also believe that we need to make sure that our community keeps our Lakeshore cleans. And that does mean picking up garbage and picking up cigarettes. Every one of us can do that. And it's a simple thing. And that and safety. How safe are our Lakeshores? And I worry about the swimmers and the waves that come into our city. So, how can we make sure that people are educated and safe on our Lakeshore? So, all of those things. We just have, as Candidate Larson said, we have to just revel in our Lakeshore and really appreciate it. Thank you.
We're going on to the next question, and Candidate Larson, we'll begin with you. What strategies do you think are needed to improve safety for e-bike users, riders of regular bicycles, pedestrians, and drivers of motorized vehicles?
So, first off, I think, right now, we are taking a look at this, at the city. We have an e-bike task force that is taking a look at all transportation, how e-bikes interact with our, with our current multi-use path, our bike path, how they work with bikers, how they work with walkers, how we deal with students that are using them from transportation that may not understand the rules of the road. So, I think first up is understanding where people are at. We need to understand what the situation are. We need to understand what communities, other communities are doing in response to this. We want to make sure that people are operating these e-bikes and sharing the road as it gets more crowded together. And that starts with education, educating our community members on, you know, what levels, level one, level two, level three e-bikes. Are there certain speed limits that we need to adopt on our bike paths? Are there certain speed limits? Are there certain age restrictions that we want, that we need to consider? I don't know what the answer is on this. I think, you know, our city, our task force that is studying these, I really look forward to what they're going to come out with. But I think there's going to be a balance that needs to be struck between, to make sure that, to make sure that there's safety on our streets, our roads, and our multi-use bike path. Thank you.
Candidate Davis, the question goes to you.
I have a dream. I dream that we had enough space and enough money to put in a second bike path all the way along our shoreline. But that's not going to happen, unfortunately. And again, we are, as a city, we have two studies going on, one about bikes and one about the e-bikes. And specifically, we have a task force. And we're, I'm, again, looking forward to the results of those. But I do know that we have been doing a lot of education. We need to continually do education, one, to the children who are on the e-bikes that don't know the rules of the road, to the parents who are purchasing those e-bikes and allowing their kids to use them. But we also need to just educate the entire city about, and it's not just e-bikes. It's one-wheelers, it's scooters, it's walkers, it's runners, it's everyone. So, we need to slow everybody down in the very busy areas. And I don't want to see a lot of signs along there, but I'd like to see painted signs that, I guess we can't do a speed limit, but we can say, you know, talk about courtesy and slowing down. I also believe that the state hasn't caught up to a lot of these new forms of transportation. And they do require some age limits and some education and certification for younger people to use these bikes, and they also require helmets. So, that is something that we could work with our state legislators on is encouraging them to look, to find those guidelines because we're not the only city that's dealing with this. Thank you.
Candidate Luttenberger, the question goes to you.
Thank you. I actually, I think they're motorized vehicles. I think we need to treat them as such. Everything from getting a permit, everything from getting taxed, everything from getting a license. At some point, they're not going away. We're never going to be without this concern. So, let's address it. Let's truly say, why are the police department driving around in cars and they're not on one of these e-bikes doing patrols on the e-paths? I don't think you have to go everywhere, but there's a lot of public and congested public use that could use some monitoring. And that's where it comes down to, this panel, this kind of solution, needs to do that. That's not a community group that's going to go out and patrol the bike paths to slow people down or stop a biker from turning a corner at a stoplight too soon. But there needs to be some sort of city-level concerns and consequences to it because we are dealing with it. It's not like you can pick an e-bike up and, you know, ideally, you would ride it all the way to Nagani on the Ironora Heritage Trail. We're not doing that. So, we, as a city, I understand there's a task force, but we, as a city, could really use a seasonal solution to this. In the wintertime, I don't know what's going to happen, but, because it's going to be cold. But at the same time, maybe we don't have to worry about it too long.
Thank you all. We'll move on to the next question, and it begins with Candidate Davis. Lack of transportation is a problem for people who do not drive or lack access to a car. What can be done to alleviate this barrier in the City of Marquette?
Well, I have this other dream that we are, you know, and we are embracing all forms of transportation with our e-bikes and our one-wheelers and our scooters and stuff. And we're putting some of them on the roads. Why can't we put golf carts on the road? Because they are roadworthy, and other cities do that. But transportation, yes. We certainly need to work with Marktran more to get better transportation. It's a difficult thing to do. It's a county-wide organization that we have representation on. I do know that they are doing some transportation up in, around the university, up to the Jacob Eddy Center. But having volunteers to transport people to simple things like healthcare is another thing. And it's something that happens, but it could be happening a lot more. It happens through the senior center, through churches, through Friends of the Elderly and things like that. But we need to take care of one another and help people with their transportation and make it safe. Make it safe for the walkers, the bikers, and for everybody. One of the things I didn't mention at the last question is that our state has a law against using cell phones in cars. But how many of you have seen cell phones on people with e-bikes? There's a lie I would like to see, but that's a safety thing. But transportation certainly is something I'd like to see more. I'd like to see bus stops. Thank you for, okay, sorry.
Candidate Luttenberger, the question goes to you.
Thank you. So, as I said, I'd like to speak in front of the committee a lot, I guess. Maybe a little too often, if you ask these two. But the last time I came up to speak was talking about how I wanted to implement some sort of trolley bus system in our town. Third Street Corridor, too many cars, too many other pedestrians. Is there a way that we can get somebody and stations around the city that maybe has a park one, or maybe that has a Lakeshore Drive, or maybe that has a university-only setup? These don't have to be run by us as a city, but these are things that we, as a city, need, and we need somebody to do it. So, if it's a government agency that does this, I agree, Marktran does their service. But I have to go west in order to go downtown if I take a Marktran bus. There are certain aspects that we, as a city, are neglecting, and this is one major part. I think we need more of a trolley system, more of a bus system, more of a walking community. But we have hills, so we need motorized vehicles for that. Whatever kind of vehicle there is, we have neglected this. And I think this is a big part where we can have parking lots and trolleys. We can have a parking lot at Cliff's Dull. We can have a parking lot at the old hospital. We can have a parking lot down at Snowberry. Thank you.
Candidate Larson, the question's yours.
Sure. Lack of transportation is certainly a barrier to, for a lot of folks, whether that be get groceries, get to the hospital, see family members. There's a few things that I think, you know, we can think about in terms of transportation. One, we've already discussed, e-bikes, they're growing, they are a growing transportation form, you know, in this community. So, regulating those or making those safe for folks who choose that instead of a car is one thing. Another piece that, you know, Candidate Davis started to talk about was starting to have bus stops, have dedicated spots, covered areas that people can wait for a bus out of the wind, out of the rain, and figure that out. Working with Marktran, how do we get a, how do we get a route that goes from the hospital down to Third Street, you know, up front, around, you know, to, you know, the grocery stores? But there's another thing, another piece of this that transportation, you know, comes with is having a livable city. A city, you know, we can, we can start thinking about, how do we work with areas of our city that don't have some of the needs, like we don't have access? Some neighborhoods like South Marquette, they have a Cal's. We've got the Spot. We've got these small places that have convenience, you know, that we, as the Commission, can work with our zoning regulator, with zoning to try to eliminate, encourage, you know, more access to goods and services that people need right in the neighborhoods that they live in. So, I think that's certainly something that we can think about, whether it's transportation or making our city more walkable and livable for those services we need.
Thank you. We'll go on to the next question, and it begins with Candidate Luttenberger. What do you think the city can or should do to address the challenges of homelessness in Marquette?
Yeah. It's one thing to be an inviting city. It's also one to be supportive. We have very few, lack of a better term, places to go. We have a lot of empty buildings for a little while, but we weren't allowed to utilize them for anything other than big block stores. So, homelessness is more than just finding a place to spend the night. Homelessness also is, we have condos that are $800,000, and we have no homes that are $200. Okay? So, at some point, can we treat housing in this town or even anywhere like we do wetland mitigation? If you're putting up a big building of $200,000, as a developer, support groups that will put up a house for $100,000 or even $60,000. We don't need huge three-bedroom homes everywhere. We could use a whole community of tiny homes. We could use a whole community of, literally, it sounds bad, but I've been a big hippie my life. So, tent camping is one of those things that, hey, for a night, here's 20 bucks, and I've got some rules that I got to follow, but I'm done, and I'm moving on. Those kinds of things, we don't have a big enough tourist park to handle the homelessness quosia or quota that we have now. And I do think tiny homes and that kind of development is helpful.
Candidate Larson, the question's yours.
Homelessness is a tough topic. It's very tough. We're trying to, we're working with folks that, you know, might be at the lowest point in their lives. And how do we, how do we meet them? How do we meet them as a community that shares the values of where we live? Trying to find a compassionate way to support those services that they're looking for. Working with Room at the Inn, that was here in Marquette, but we've exceeded that capacity. So, we need to, we need to work with our public safety, with residents, understanding where those problem areas, you know, might be to address issues of safety for residents, safety for the individuals who don't have housing, also sanitation, you know, issues, you know, we need to think about those. You know, whether that's, whether that's helping to find, you know, additional grant dollars to help the organizations here in Marquette do better, expand capacity, or, you know, whether that's to reach out to, you know, our, to work with our fellow Commissioners here on services and practices that are going to be beneficial to the community. I know there's not one size-fits-all for Marquette. You know, homelessness seems to be a new issue for a lot of folks who grew up here. You know, we didn't see it, but it was probably hidden. It was hidden from us. So, it didn't exist. It existed, you know, on your friend's couches with relatives that were elsewhere. But I think there's a lot of things we can come together to do and be compassionate while doing it.
Candidate Davis, the question goes to you.
Yes. Yes. And you're right. This is a very, very difficult question, and it's not one that the city can or should do alone. There are, this is one of those things that I hear a lot from community people. I get a lot of calls, and we have a lot of people at our commission meetings coming with a great deal of passion and love for those who are unhomed. And if you've met one person who is unhomed, you've met one person. You haven't met them all, because they all have a different story to tell. It is unfortunate that our churches no longer are doing a rotating thing, but it's, it was difficult for them. We work as much as we can with the Room at the Inn, the Jansen House, the Harbor House, and any other organization that can work with the unhomed in our community. And it's not just a place to lay down in the evening. It's the meals, and it's also the social services that are needed to go along with it. Does the money, does the city have money to provide those social services? Not at this time. Hopefully, we would like to. Other cities have millages that are directed just particularly for the unhomed. We hear all kinds, actually, it's, it's, there's so many problems that are wrapped up into this, some who are just in an unfortunate place and some who are choosing to be homeless. It is taking one-third of our police force every evening to deal with the homelessness. So it certainly is a problem. The city is doing that kind of work with, with the city police.
Thank you. We'll go on to the next question, and it will begin with candidate Larson. What are the pros and cons for College Avenue being reopened at the old hospital site? And do you think it should be reopened?
So, it being closed right now certainly has caused, you know, some issues with traffic flow. You know, where previously, you know, we had College Avenue and Magnetic to help move traffic, you know, from east to west within the city. We've certainly put a lot more, we put additional strain on, you know, other neighborhood streets. So there is, there is that. However, right now, College Avenue is in rough shape itself. I don't know that there's going to be immediate value in opening College Avenue while there is potentially to be development along that, along that street. So it will be, it might, it's, we're, it's going to be a few rough years, you know, without, without that street in the, in the short term. However, I think, you know, the city really needs to take a, take a look at how we're going to develop that area. We're doing a traffic study in that area right now, trying to make sure that we are moving people as efficiently as possible. And when that development comes, that, that that street gets reopened, that it maneuvers people into a different direction, we're going to be taking a look at it. But in the short term, in the condition that it's in, I think it's going to need, you know, some work to be done on it, you know, prior to be, to being open again. And I don't know that the value is there for the short term, you know, on College Avenue.
And the question goes to candidate Davis.
Yes. That area around College Avenue and the hospital redevelopment is an area of concern for me. I try to envision what it will be like in the future. And College Avenue being closed has put a lot of strain on Magnetic Street and some of the other streets around them. And I know that parking on both sides of Magnetic Street really narrows that street for transportation, and there's a lot of citizens that are concerned about that. And it, Commissioner, candidate Larson is right, that it's, it doesn't make sense to open it at this point when there's going to be development. But even if just in, during the development, it's going to be a difficult thing. And not only the old hospital, but what Northern is doing with their, with their new dormitories on Presque Isle. So that's what our traffic study is all about. And the city has a traffic study, and Northern joined that traffic study with additional funding to make sure that they are figuring out what has happening with their traffic. So we really do need to wait for that traffic study. If you are of the concern that you want College Avenue reopened, once that development is done, you best show up at our public, our meetings and with the developer, because the current plans are to stop the flow of traffic in College Avenue and reopen K Avenue. And K Avenue opening is another option that we can have. But, but it's just like potential. It's, we need to hear from the citizens about what they want, and we need to hear from our traffic study.
Candidate Luttenberger, the question's yours.
Thank you. So I've lived on Fair Ave. I work on Fair Ave. I can't drive from Fair Ave to and from work. I have to go around campus. I've always had to go around campus. And now that College Avenue isn't there, I have to go farther around campus. Again, these are things that I actually think, I'm going to blame the developer on this one, and whoever, like, approved this brownfield plan, there's been no discussion as to what's going there. And it seems to be changing a lot every time somebody brings up something. We now have a parking structure that's going to go in where there was a parking structure. We had a huge building that had individual homes or rooms that had all of the plumbing that worked, all of the lighting worked, and we tore it down with no actual, like, plan to go ahead. I'm, I'm going to say I'm really upset about that. So having College Ave open, though, since I've lived there, I've noticed that you can't drive that way anymore. We should just, we need to fix how people get into campus. We need to fix how people get through our town from left side to right side. College Ave is the only one that goes from Lake Shore all the way up to the high school. So that's the main road for a lot of our students, a lot of the commute for individuals in our town. We need to figure out how to open it up again.
Okay, I think it goes here. Correct? Okay, all right. We're coming down to the last question for the forum, and it'll go to candidate Davis first. What are the possibilities to upgrade Lakeview Arena? It's currently rundown and needs some repair. What are your ideas and suggestions as a city commissioner?
Well, you've hit a question that's very kind of near and dear to my heart. I have two grandchildren that play hockey, and I had a daughter that played hockey, and I, one of my grandchildren also did figure skating. I'm in the arena a lot. And it's the front door of our community for a lot of people that visit us. I did a very informal survey and found that over 7,000 people come into that building every year, and that does not include tournaments or high school hockey games. So we really do need to pay attention to it. People worry about how much is taken out of our general fund, and I need to tell you that that has been reduced. At one time, we were taking $400,000, $500,000 out of our general fund to support Lakeview Arena. This coming budget, we have $100,000 projected. The consultant who helped us with our recreational plan said that most cities that have arenas, if they get 80% of their funding to cover the expense of the arena, they're doing well. We are doing better than that. Yet the arena does need a lot of work and needs a lot of love. And we need to just kind of change our perception about, that's, that's a very big asset to our community, and we need to just do some cosmetic things, and we also need to make sure that it is an arena for a lot of years that we are happy about.
Candidate Luttenberger, the question goes to you.
Okay. Well, yeah, this is one of the things that made me run for city government. I work at Lakeview Arena. I, I know it intimately. For the last three years, I've asked all of these questions. Every single time I get a chance to come up to the city commission, please add more to the budget. Please, I'll have to wait until August to find out if you did add more, but there's a point when the doors are rusty or the, okay. Before I go too far into the critique, though, of Lakeview Arena, I do want to admit, I have a lot of people who come back. It's a 50-year-old building, and a lot of people come back for the nostalgia. So getting rid of the wood seats, getting rid of the layout, those things, please don't touch. But at the same time, a Zamboni could be fixed. We don't have any arts and culture down there, so why don't we have any bands? Why is Third Street the only place you can have an open mic night, and we don't have any kind of activities in the summertime at Lakeview Arena? So part of it is, yes, it's going to cost a lot of money to do all these different things. The other part of it is, the city has all of the right pieces in place. We have an arts and culture department. We have a recreation facility or group. We just don't pay for it. And I think that's a problem. I think we need to give them, instead of $100,000, we need to keep giving them 70, or 700,000 every year, because it's been 50 years of neglect.
Candidate Larson, the question goes to you.
Yeah, so I guess the question was, what are the possibilities with Lakeview Arena? I mean, there's, there's a few. We can, we can, we can decide as a community, is this, does this meet the values of our community? Is this something that is important to us? Is this where we want to invest our dollars? You know, can we build up this 50-year-old building and, you know, do maintenance on it? Provide a new Zamboni? Update the compressors, the dehumidifiers that are in there that, you know, certainly may need some help? Or upgrade the ice, ice themselves, you know, with a, with a system that, you know, you can bring on, bring on ice, operate multiple sheets of ice at the same time for longer instead of taking one off and rotating them on and off? We could do that, if that's where our values, if that's where our values lie. We could also think about, we had, earlier in the year, we had another community individual come forth and want to invest and potentially purchase it. We haven't seen the numbers for that, but, you know, I would like, we would, as a commission, I think we would take a look at what they thought that could, that could happen. You know, there'd have to be caveats if it was to be sold. But I don't know if that's, if that's going to happen, you know, right now. But other, other options, you know? It has the largest, one of the largest south-facing roofs in the city of Marquette. You know, are there way to offset, are there way to offset electrical costs? Could you put solar on there? Are, you know, can we use our team that we already have in Parks and Rec and expand events there to make it more profitable? You know, what is that plan that moves forward? So I think there's a number of things that we can think about, but I think, you know, that's going to be something that the commission and the community have to decide together.
Well, thank you. We have come to the last minutes of the forum for the Marquette City Commission. Each candidate has one minute for a closing statement. And candidate Luttenberger, we will begin with you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Thanks for hosting this. I'm really honored. At some point, this is how I plan on, on sitting on this side of the bench. Hopefully, with a lot longer time to speak, so I can explain myself a little bit more and listen to some of the comments a little bit more. But for the life of me, this is the civic duty. I'm up here because I'm an American. I plan on, you know, honoring democracy. This is how I do it. This was an open seat normally. I know about this in April. April taxes come, and I just give the city a hundred bucks and say, put me on the ballot, please. I didn't realize we were only three people for two seats. So this is one of those. Please, I, I hope you took my comments as how serious I am. I'm, I'm a part of this community, and I want to be a part of this community, and I think our city commission has not done enough. Thank you.
Candidate Larson?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for having us and hosting, hosting this, and thanks to our fellow, my fellow candidates, you know, up here. And I think we all agree that, you know, Marquette is certainly a special place, and we want to make sure that it remains as vibrant as possible and welcoming as possible, and make sure that it's the home that we want to live in. So I'd like to, you know, continue serving on the commission as I am right now, just to make sure that, you know, our infrastructure stays strong, you know, and that we have a sound budget moving forward, and that, of course, our Lake Shore and other natural assets remain open and accessible to everybody who lives here. So I hope to keep listening. I hope to keep collaborating with the community members, with fellow commissioners, and certainly make sure that we remain a livable community for the foreseeable future. So I appreciate the opportunity to everybody here to listen to me and give me a chance, you know, to earn your support. Thank you.
Candidate Davis?
I have so much more to say, but it's all over. There's so much more to say about Lakeview, about transportation, about housing, and all of the issues that the city commission has before them, so talk to us. Call me. I'd love to sit down with any one of you. I'd love a phone conversation. We can have coffee, we can have beer, it doesn't matter. But I think it's really important for me to hear from any of you what your concerns are, and if you have questions about how we do things, I really would like to explain to that. So I would very much like to serve as your city commissioner for another three years. Please vote for me. I, I find the work very rewarding. I promise to spend the time to study the issues before making decisions. And I will study the issues by asking the citizens, as well as getting information from the staff and from my own resources. So I, I will also work with our community partners, because the city doesn't work alone in this community. We work with a lot of different community partners. We work with the state, Michigan Municipal League, and our state legislators. So we need to keep Marquette moving forward and preserve the culture that we have here.
Well, this concludes our forum. Thank you very much, candidates. And audience, if you didn't get your questions answered, please you reach out. We had a lot of questions that we weren't able to get to, so there's a lot more out there. So this concludes our event this evening. For further information on the upcoming election on November 4th, you can go online. There's a voter guide there that the League of Women Voters hosts at vote411.org. And then there's also a very nice abbreviated printed guide that you can find at establishments around town. The early voting will begin Thursday, October 30th, at 8:00 a.m. at the Peter White Public Library. And absentee ballots have been sent out, and if you haven't received one, you can request one. But they should be returned to the city and township clerks or mailed at least a week before the election. We of the League of Women Voters of Marquette County would like to remind the audience here and at home that if you found this forum informative and you believe that democracy is not just a spectator support, sport, we invite you to join us. The League of Women Voters is open to new members and is committed to having a diverse membership. Anyone 16 and older of any gender can join, participate in activities, and take on a leadership role. So thank you, audience, for coming out with us, and thank you again, candidates, and enjoy your evening.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.